And you are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 19th Dublin City Council Workshop. It's our annual operating budget workshop. And I believe Mr. McDaniel was going to lead us off this evening and walk us through how tonight will go. So please, General, take it.
Well, good evening, members of council, and thank you for your time this evening for this proposed operating budget, 2021 operating budget work session. As you know, at your last council meeting, Matt did a bit of an overview regarding projected revenues, expenditures, very broad overview. Tonight, and I want to thank Matt for collaborating and putting together a sort of outline of discussion for this evening, which we did share with you previously, and you had a chance to take a look at. But he'll use this to kind of walk us through, if it's okay with you, just sort of an approach to the review. Our focus is going to initially be on hotel motel bed tax fund, then the enterprise funds. A bit of a discussion of the reorg that we're proposing as a follow up to the succession planning and reorg that we talked about last year. This is the sort of the next phase of implementation. And then generally, some other key changes in the budget. But I would just remind you that generally, we're proposing a relatively flat 2021 operating budget. And not, it appears like a lot of change, but the change is sort of inherent within some of the same revenue projections and costs that we had in 2020. So I also want to not only recognize and thanks, Matt, for all the hard work that's put into this. But I want to thank all the staff because on here tonight, there's a lot of our division directors who've all contributed to the formulation of this proposed budget. And I want to thank them all for the opportunity for all their input and hard work on this as well. So with that, I'm going to just quickly hand it over to Matt and let him take us through the conversation if that's all. Thank you, Dana. Great, thank you, council. Good evening. So as Dana said, this is our first operating budget workshop for ordinance 29-20, which is the 2021 operating budget. We're going to take a look at some of the larger, more significant changes from a budgetary perspective tonight. There will be an opportunity at the end of this meeting to ask questions on maybe information or topics that weren't covered about in this presentation and to begin to set the agenda for future work sessions. There you go. All right, so we are here at the October 19th Council Operating Budget Work Session. Again, we're not doing the committee hearings this year. We're going to go through the work session format. We have work sessions scheduled for next Monday and next Wednesday if needed. And tentatively, we're intending on the second hearing, public reading of the operating budget at the November 9th meeting of city council. Additionally, as Dana mentioned, department and division directors are available tonight and will be next week to answer any questions. Brief outline of the agenda this evening. We're going to start with a conversation on the hotel motel fund, including revenues and expenditures and the 2021 transfer from the general fund. We're also going to talk about the recreation fund and those same subject areas. We're going to cover the enterprise funds. These are not strictly considered operating funds. They're not part of the operating budget because they're enterprise funds. But they are obviously an important component to our city and something that we want to make sure we cover. They were initially covered, at least in some detail, as part of the capital budget. So we're going to cover them tonight. And then finally, some discussion of some moving parts as part of the reorg and discussion of the budgetary impact of those changes. Finally, we'll have a discussion for other departments and divisions not discussed previously in the agenda this evening. And then an overview and topics of discussion on the 26. With that, I'd like to begin with the 2021 fund summary. This fund summary typically is one of the early tables in an operating budget from prior years. So you'll see it this year. And from left to right, you can see the beginning cash balance in all of the operating funds. You can see the estimated revenue, that second column there, and that totals the 86.6 million that we discussed at the September 28th work session. You can see some transfers and advances into the funds, and we'll go into those in a little bit of detail. That's part of the conversation tonight of some transfers and advances in that column. The budgeted estimated expenditures, that column there totals to that $94 million number. That is the operating budget. But there are expenditures outside of that budget in the form of advances and transfers that impact each fund. We are going to discuss those in a little bit of detail as well. The most significant of which being the $31.3 million transfers and advances out of the general fund. You'll see that red arrow directing you to the, I guess it's the right hand side of my screen. Hopefully, it's the right hand side of yours as well, that kind of details which funds comprise that transfer. And you'll see many of those funds listed here. So we have a transfer of $2 million from the general fund to the street maintenance fund. So you'll see that as a transfer out of the general fund and then a $2 million transfer in to the street maintenance and repair fund. And that can follow on down the line, safety pool, recreation, cemetery, bed packs, et cetera. There are two CIP related transfers from the general fund that were approved as part of the 21 through 25 CIP. That's a $6 million transfer for the capital project and a $150,000 transfer for sewer extensions. There's also an advance of about $1.5 million to the Bridge Street Fund as part of the Bridge Street Cooperative Agreement with the school. Totalling all those together, you get that $31.3 million number. All polled, we have an operating budget that has a negative variance of about $7.4 million. About half of that's related to COVID. And the general fund expenditures totaling variance of $13.7 million. Again, a little over $6 million of that is capital transfers. And then the remaining $7.4 million is the operating variance that we're going to discuss today. We'll begin our discussion with the hotel motel fund. So going back to that fund summary to orient the part of the conversation we're going to start with, that bed tax transfer of $1.5 million from the general fund to the bed tax fund is not something we historically do. And we are only proposing it this year because of the impact of COVID-19. And it's not my hope, it is my hope, this and this transfer will be a one time occurrence or at least will be reduced in future years as the hotel motel fund recovers. What you will see on the next slide is that $3.3 million revenue number in the hotel motel fund is generally much closer to $5 million, totaling about $4.8 or $4.9 million in prior years. So we need that one and a half million dollar transfer this year in order for revenues to that fund to be consistent with prior years. Taking a look at revenues from the prior years. This is a chart of actual expenditures from 18 and 19 along with the budget, year to date actuals and budget numbers in the 2021 proposed budget. And you can see these revenues are broken down by category. So we have local taxes. Those are the hotel motel tax that we traditionally think of as the revenue component of this fund. Additionally, we have charge for service revenue, fine and license revenue, and interest revenue, as well as some miscellaneous revenue. All of those revenues are revenues that are earned in one form or another from our community events, largely the Dublin Irish Festival, but also potentially from Independence Day, Spooktacular, et cetera. Additionally, you'll see in that other financing sources, those are transfers and advances. And you can see that we haven't had to utilize that in prior year. But this year, we are proposing a $1.5 million transfer from the general fund. Couple of important things to note about these fund revenues is that hotel motel tax is distributed to two funds prior to being credited to the hotel motel fund. So what I mean is that Fund 232, which is the hotel motel fund we're discussing today, receives 65% of the tax collected. While Fund 804, which is actually an agency fund dedicated to what was the Convention and Visitors Bureau, now Visit Dublin, Ohio, receives 35% of this money. And that split occurs before it's received by the fund. So much like our income taxes distributed 75%, 25%, the general fund receives 75%. The Fund 401 receives 25%. A similar distribution happens between these two funds. So that $960,000 number represents 65% of the estimated hotel motel income tax for next year. The important thing to note about the community events revenue is that we are assuming that all 2021 events, particularly the Irish Festival and Independence Day, occur at normal levels. So that means we are budgeting normal revenues and normal expenditures. Normal revenues and normal revenues are basically a break even Dublin Irish Festival from the bed tax fund's perspective. It makes and spends between two and two and a half million dollars depending on attendance variations in any given year. If those assumptions appear unlikely, we will have additional conversations with you in the spring to discuss the Irish Festival and what it does look like when we have more information. It's difficult to say at this point whether full expenditures and full revenues is a very likely possibility or an improbability, and we won't really have more information until we get on the other side of it. So much like we did in 2020, when the pandemic came out of nowhere in March and we had to have these conversations, we're proposing a similar outlook in 2021 where we know the pandemic is going to have an impact. We don't know what it will be. We may be on the other side of it, or we may be in the middle of it. And we will have that conversation with as much information available. And revenues and expenditures will be adjusted in 2021 as they have been in 2020 in order to deal with whatever the reality is that we are facing. I think it's important to just say again that this transfer is 100% related to the impact of COVID-19. There has been no drastic increase in fund related expenditures. It really has been a revenue driven crisis in this fund for obvious reasons. And the reason for this proposed transfer is important. It's going to preserve the fund's minimum fund balance unofficially at least of two to two and a half million dollars. That seen as the minimal level necessary to ensure that subsequent Irish festivals can be held should we have a negative Irish festival. Generally, that was believed to be a negative weather event would cause revenues to not meet their traditional norm for the Irish festival, and the fund balance would sustain future festivals then in that situation. Regarding expenditures, the fund, the fund's expenditures are fairly limited, fairly limited to a few expenditure categories. As you can see, these expenditure categories are mainly dedicated to staff salaries and benefits. In the personal services category, in contractual services, supplies, capital outlay, and other charges and expenditures, we have the expenditures related to the city's special events. We also have a $200,000 grant for community grants and organizations, which is the $200,000 bed tax grant. There was some discussion earlier this year about that $200,000 appropriation and increasing it or decreasing it with regard to fund balance. I felt it was most appropriate this year to leave it at that $200,000 number and bring it up for discussion here. This is certainly a number that's within council's control to increase or decrease as they see fit. We've put notifications on the bed tax grant applications this year that the amount appropriated is subject to availability and council's determination as part of this process. So that number is certainly something that is open for discussion. The Arts Council, the 25% of the revenue that's paid to the Arts Council comes out of this fund because of the decrease in hotel motel revenue projected next year. This expenditure has decreased to $360,000. And we also have the Bridge Park NCA. So that's a development agreement, contractual agreement between the city and Crawford-Horing and the Bridge Park NCA to pay out some hotel motel revenues for the hotels located in Bridge Park. It's also important to note, as part of the development, the Dublin Arts Council grant, the 2020 actual number of $479,000 includes the $306,000 in extra support that council granted them earlier this year. About $120,000 of that support remains to be paid in the final three months of this year. But the reason that number is so high is because of that extra support. And I think that's also a good segue to mention that at current, there are no expenditures in the bed tax fund for additional support for Visit Dublin, Ohio, or the Dublin Arts Council. As part of the October 26th workshop, we will be bringing forward proposals from that, those organizations in order to support them next year. And those decisions would be expenditures in addition to the amount listed in the current budget. So those proposals will be discussed next week, and council will have an opportunity to weigh their support and weigh the impact on the fund at that point. So services provided in this fund in 2021 are limited, again, to community events staff and special events, community grants, the Dublin Arts Council grant, and the Bridge Park NCA. Short history of the hotel motel fund balance. You can see that the fund balance is predicted to decline in 2020 to somewhere between two and two and a half million dollars. It's currently at about the $3.3 million level. We're projecting that in 2021 with this transfer, it will be about $2.6 million at the end of the year. Couple of things to note about this fund balance is that I have in there in red an allocation for the art in public places. This is a $75,000 appropriation that is withheld from the Dublin Arts Council. So they receive 25% of the revenue minus the $75,000 appropriation that is then retained in the fund to be used for the Art in Public Places program. So it is part of the fund balance, but it is most properly seen as an allocation to that program. It is certainly within council's purview to change this allocation or amend it in future years, particularly with the support that the city has provided to the Arts Council in 2020 and may be asked to provide in 2021. But this money is not properly seen, at least without a redesignation, as being part of the unrestricted fund balance that would be available to fund future Irish festivals. So you can see that that red bar does extend that green bar a pretty, pretty good amount above the minimum fund balance line. But that red part is really not most properly viewed as part of a fund balance for purposes of securitization regarding the Irish festival. So at present, this allocation has not been spent since 2015. So it's $75,000 per year that's been building up since 2016. And in 2021, it'll be about $450,000 of the fund balance is restricted to this allocation. So there are some policy considerations. There may be more than these three, but these are the three that I'd like to highlight today. We have the proposed policy option, policy option number one, which is no reduction in services and the refund of the shortfall with a transfer from the general fund. So the proposed operating budget uses this transfer for one and a half million dollars and will then normally continue operations associated with the hotel motel fund. Policy option two would be additionally, no reduction in services, but utilize the fund balance to fund the shortfall. This is a strategy that has essentially been deployed this year where the fund balance is decreased to four, from four million to about two and a half or three million dollars. The problem is that continuing to utilize this strategy would take it below that unofficial fund balance level. And I think it's important, while the general fund balance is high, as I believe it is and will continue to be in 2021, that we pay for essentially the services that we're consuming in that fund to protect future Irish festivals in years where maybe the general fund balance isn't as robust. Finally, the third policy option is a reduction in services to reduce or eliminate the transfer. These expenditure reductions include the actions within the hotel motel fund, including community events staffing, special events, particularly the Independence Day Festival, the 10% optional appropriation to Visit Dublin, Ohio, the 25% appropriation to the Arts Council, or the $200,000 allocation to community grants. I think it's also important to note that this strategy has been employed this year and likely will be deployed to some degree next year because of the cancellation of events that naturally occurs as part of this process. So appropriation reductions occurred particularly with regard to community events this year. We've seen most of the community events have been canceled, and that funding has returned to the fund. It's possible that we could see similar actions occur next year. So with that, I'd like to open up the opportunity for any questions or comments or discussion on the hotel motel fund.
Hey, Matt, it's Kathy. I had a general que, wait, don't, don't back up with your slides. But way back in the very beginning, when you showed the allocation of this, you had the ending cash balance on that general fund to be $49 million. Would that not put us below our threshold?
No, the 49, except the $49 million is 49, $49 million divided by 87.6 million gives you that 56%.
So we're, we're, we're above it by 6%?
Correct.
Under this, okay. Second sort of a general question. So did I understand that in addition to the number that you're proposing here, the Visit Dublin number would be additive to the budget? It is not included in the budget now to have any supplemental, is that right?
That is correct. In the current operating budget, there is no supplemental included for the Arts Council or Visit Dublin, Ohio at this point in time. The operating budget represents the city's operating expenditures relative to our operating revenues. And any additional organizations that are supported would be above what we currently have budgeted.
So just to be clear, if we so choose to add dollars like we did this year, that would come out of the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. So the 49 million, depending on what decisions are made, and those two would be, would, you, would, let's assume everything else stays at status quo, would that reduction would come from that, that value as well? Is that correct?
It's possible. I, I think at this point, the $1.5 million transfer from the general fund to the hotel motel fund is on the high side. It's on the conservative side. I don't necessarily believe that we would have to increase that transfer in order to provide some support to the Arts Council or Visit Dublin, Ohio. It's possible, and it would come, whether it's part of the current transfer or part of another transfer, it would ultimately be coming from the general fund. But I'm not sure that we would have to increase it at this point.
Okay. And just one final question, just sort of a general high level question. And so then with that transfer of 1.5 million, let's say some of the activities did not occur in, in the year. It would be your anticipation that are, or your, I'm asking, would it be your anticipation that the expenses and revenues might move, but we would generally keep that transfer at this level to, to bolster the fund? And the impact would, I guess, be operational, not fund related question?
It would be my intention to utilize the one and a half million dollar transfer amount in order to keep the minimum fund, the end of year fund balance of the hotel motel fund north of 2.5 million. So if, if a million dollars would get that done, then that would be the amount transferred. And the only reason we would do that is to support future Irish festivals. This isn't a situation where the fund balance is going to go negatively or for accounting rules forced in sense to make the transfer. The transfer really is about safeguarding future Irish festivals. So a transfer really should be viewed as, as an up to amount. I mean, all appropriations are, but transfers really are. We transfer the minimum that is necessary to achieve our goal. Generally, that goal is a non-negative fund balance. That's the goal for all the other operating funds. In this instance, it would be to have a fund balance of at least two and a half million year end. And I think what we're seeing is, it's, it's very hard to estimate the expenditures of the bed tax fund when we're not having a normal year. And we don't know what a normal year is next year. And really, we're estimating bed tax revenues down 60%, but that's, that's a really a rougher guess than I think any of us would like. But here we are at budget time, and we have to put a number to paper. So that's, that's what we're doing. So I think there's a lot of moving parts in this fund, and we're just going to have to continue to analyze it throughout the remainder of '21 as we have in 2020. I think the million and a half is a fair start to that estimation process. But I, I would be hesitant to make any commitments that I won't be having conversations with you asking for more or less during next year.
Thank you.
Matt, in trying to think about how, you know, how do we make assumptions for what's going to happen in the year to come? Because I, I don't think unfortunately, when we all celebrate New Year's Eve, that magically the year is just going to get better at that point. You know, particularly for the community grants that we do, is it possible for us to do, rather than one set of community grants requests at the end of the year, to do two? Because I think that for the spring stuff, we may find that people are not going, they're willing to put off their request until they know what's actually going to happen versus making their request, and then it just doesn't happen. Do you see what I'm saying? So that we have an opportunity to potentially plan for six months and then plan for another six months because we're not in a normal year. Normally, we'd be able to plan for the entire year in terms of the community grants. It's just a, to think about a way to help smooth this out just a little bit.
I, the community grant application process window is, I believe, open or soon to open. I'll contact some of those, I'll, I'll reach out to a community events to discuss maybe some of those time issues with events and see if that would be helpful or if they're able to know that, you know, presuming that they're, they're able to have an event, that they would like to have an event in the spring or fall or whatever their normal timeline is, to see if there is any benefit to that or not.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I just, I think, I do think that particularly for some of the events that might happen in later spring or early summer, it's just right now, it's really unknown. And it might be helpful for them if they could wait a couple of months before they have to submit that application. Totally just a thought, and I, I do appreciate you following up on that because you're right. This is very difficult. It's really difficult to make predictions about where we're going to be 3, 6, 9 months from now.
And I would, you know, further point out that we made similar adjustments in 2020. As events were canceled and the Art Rightous Foundation came forward, their appropriation was increased to a level that was not permitted at the application process. So that's something that we could see happen next year as well, as we, we make appropriations to the current grant number. If events fall out, but other events need additional support in order to occur, you know, we've done that in 2020. I, I see no reason we couldn't continue that process in 21.
Yeah, I like the ability to, to have some flexibility. And it might be nice if, rather than reacting to it like we had to do in 2020, is maybe we schedule for that in 2021? Because I think it would help you all prepare a little bit. And I think it would help some of the folks who might be coming to us for, for those dollars to, to prepare as well. Because everything's been so last minute this year. It'd just be nice to have some level of planning. And there it is, my type A just came out. Sorry about that.
You know, I think what we did is we really inserted some expectation management in the process. And I think that's what you're asking for, Councilmember Ludo. And I, and everyone was extremely cooperative and understanding on that. So while we made plan for the big ask, if you will, the caveat to anything is, well, this also depends on availability of funding. And we could, we could break those up in tranches or revisit it, you know, as the year progresses. So that's, I guess that's really an overarching theme that, that I would just write on the back of as well is that, you know, as we present this budget, it's a budget for the four year burden, knowing what we know. But things will change for the good or for the worse. And so, you know, as we always do, we'll have to check into this budget on an ongoing basis and, and, you know, make sure we're keeping stride with our, with our abilities.
Matt, a couple of questions. I mean, we have, I think your proposal is good, and I think the transfer of, for the general fund is good in this case because we have such a loss in hotel motel revenues. But, you know, there are some discretionary funds that we've, we've said yes to that are, they're truly just sort of, you know, the extras that if we had a household budget, we'd be looking at probably maybe not, not spending or using in other ways. So a couple that I kind of looked at, and I wanted to ask you if there's others. You mentioned the art in public places is a $450,000 little pool of money. And there's $200,000 in, you know, the beautification grant. We said, when we said yes to the sidewalk maintenance, that that was only if and when funds were available. I don't know what that is per year. But can you, can you think of any other pools of money like that that are really very discretionary? Sort of the extras you would give to the community when, when you have extra money to give. And then secondly, is there any way through our data analytics we can determine, especially when it comes to recreation services, as I looked on the next slides, where we might have to make some decisions? Any analysis of what's really used, what's really been utilized? So that if you do have to do some cost cutting, you do it based on data and not just on. So that if you do have to do some cost cutting, you do it based on data and not just on subjective, you know, you think this is not something that's, that someone would use when actually they do use it. And there's another thing you think is probably, uh, being very used and it's not used. I mean, are there ways that you can, uh, help us find out whether or not we're utilizing the monies if we have to cut them here or there?
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Fox, I would point you for budget utilization reports to the packet of information and reports distributed for the October twelfth ordinance hearing. There was a listing of reports in there. The first two were budget utilization reports. So those tell you basically exactly what you're asking, which is of the amount that was appropriated and how much was spent.
Okay.
Broken down a couple of different ways by department, um, and.
That was in October. Where, what, when did you put, when does that? I have so many piles of paper in front of me, Matt. I just don't even know anymore.
Absolutely. They were, they were provided as attachments to the first hearing of the ordinance at the October twelfth meeting. And the, the, they're titled budget reports regarding the twenty-one proposed operating budget. So those are utilization reports. And if you want greater detail than what's provided there, we can analyze it at, at a couple of different levels greater than that. But that shows you, and I think, uh, does a pretty good job of demonstrating that there is a high degree of budget utilization across the city in most departments in most years and, um, that, that cuts are likely to be meaningful in some sort of service providing aspect. So I would look there. And I think with regard to the bed, bed tax fund in general, that art in public places is something that we could probably discuss as to where that fits in in a priority scheme as part of a fund balance or an allocation that we want to continue. It's something that, when the Arts Council came forward in twenty-twenty, we felt it was important to preserve because it really is spending for, from the Arts Council budget for a public purpose, for public art. And that certainly, we're, we're trying to minimize, I guess, the impact on resident services, including the provision of public art. But if we're at a point now where, you know, we need to make a decision between that and the general fund transfer, then, then that will be an information, that would be a decision we could, we could look at.
Well, no one wants to, no one wants to take away savings, especially for art in public places. But if it means that the Art Council can continue, if we have really, I don't anticipate any of us are going to be in that situation, honestly. I think, I hope that we're going to be on the upswing. Uh, I guess I'm just looking at where these pools of money are and it's Arts Council money. And they're the ones that we're transferring the dollars for. So sometimes you have to dip into savings, I suppose, if you, if you can't find other ways to do it. But let's hope that we're not going to have to do that. So, and we'll take a look at utilization.
Two things I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind. One, one would be, you know, when you're looking at the programmatic aspects of, of art, of the Arts Council and what they're providing to the community, sort of do some prioritization within that and say, you know, static new art as important as programmatic art, you know, that are keeping people involved and unisolated and all those things that they've been contributing to in such a great way as an essential service during this really stressful time. Uh, the other thing I would just, the other caveat, as you review that list that Matt mentioned, the only thing I would suggest, and maybe Matt just doesn't exactly apply correctly, but just keep in mind, we pump the brakes intentionally on, you know, a good twenty percent of the budget this year. So when you're doing some comparison and you're seeing where we may not have been spending, keep in mind, some of that was very intentional compared to previous times. So I don't want to overskew that we're not spending because, because again, some of that was very intentional this last year. So just kind of keep that in back of your mind if you would. So, so Mayor, I don't know to what extent, you know, you want to check off on some of these, uh, policy options, or you want to just kind of tuck them away for future discussion, you know, at, at the next time we get together. We don't want to, certainly not trying to overpressure your CMEs for the first time. So, you know, the extent that you want to spend some time all over, you've got plenty of time to, to do that. Or think about it and get back to us if you have any questions. So.
Well, I certainly do appreciate the way Matt presented it and it's nice to have some options outlined for us. You know, odds are we're going to have to pick an option. But most likely the data will change before we, before we pick an option. We'll either have a picture of things getting better or a picture of things not being as good as we had hoped. I, you know, y'all are pretty bright people, but I, I, I have, I don't have much of an inkling of which way that's going to be. So. I think Dana, your offer to go ahead and file those away. And, um, I, I don't think any of us are ready to pick one of those. And, and I don't think we're in a position to know what, what the gap is that we're trying to fill just yet. Yeah, normally we have a better idea of what the gaps are going to be or what the excess is going to be in most years. Uh, planning in this one, we don't. So I'm wishing it all of you.
Just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I do think though, Matt, you know, we'll have to have some form of direction uh, upon adoption of the budget, correct? As we, uh, we need to have that, uh, you know, which, which way we're going to go with that by adoption, just, just to clarify. I'm sure you knew that, but just, just making sure.
And then the, then, then the revenues, as they come in, we'll, we'll learn more about, you know, he was saying, you know, he has a million and a half in there on the transfer, but believes that's a conservative number, that's a high number. It may be closer to a million, which, which may change some of the, you know, some of what we want to do. So I would imagine we'd have some modifications that are coming. So.
Yeah, it must, for, for, you know, purposes of adopting the budget, you could, for example, pick one, choose option one, knowing that's the budgeting approach, knowing that even once the budget's in effect, then we get into next year, we can review all of that on an ongoing basis. And we can only suggest, um, to either in any of these options you choose, you know, as the year goes along. So.
Right. As we get closer, option two may, may be a more reasonable, you know, option to select. So unless I see anything from my fellow council members, um, you know, I suspect we will just adopt an option. Um, and when the, when it comes time to exercise that option, we'll review it prior to exercising it and verify that it's still the right one or select a different one. Is that counsel, can I get a thumbs up, thumbs down, head shake? Is that, is that where we're kind of comfortable going? Thanks. And Matt, I really appreciate the work on those. I, I, I don't know that it matters a tremendous amount, which option we outline right now. I know it does to you for planning purposes, but I think all of us are going to want to look at the data when the rubber meets the road and make sure that whatever options on the paper is the option that we want to execute.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I, I just want to be clear. When I say, I think the million and a half is conservative, it could be a million. I, I don't mean that that's, I, I think the million and a half is the right number for a variety of reasons that that extra half a million is in there protecting. One is I anticipate, I don't know that I predict, but I anticipate that you may want to behave as you did in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one with regard to supporting Visit Dublin and the Arts Council. So that was part of making sure that there was a robust number there. We don't, I don't know the anticipation or the support for the art in public places and that fund balance reallocation. So assuming that may go in a conservative, keep the allocation direction, that, that appropriation supports that. So it's really a function of decisions that haven't been made yet. As decisions are made, we can, we can fine tune into that, that number.
And so Matt, you're, what you're really saying is, is I understood earlier is if we keep that, you're, your suggestion is to keep that fund balance at two-and-a-half million, all said and done. And so that, that, that somewhat is the policy question. Do we think, do we think that makes sense? And then you can tell us as we go through and make these decisions, what it takes to make that happen. Is that?
I think so, correct. And then, you know, depending upon how the bed tax revenue comes in throughout the year, it'll be better or worse than that, than that estimate. And then we'll have to continuously have conversations about that in, uh, as, as part of that. As that information unfolds, really, we'll know more when we know more. And that'll happen in the spring of next year, most likely.
So, yeah, and I, you know, I think it's saying we want to keep a fund balance to preserve our future, our future abilities up until not to exceed a million and a half, something like that. Later on, when we get through these things, that type of request makes a lot of sense because that number could fluctuate. But it's up to a certain amount and not more than that without further discussion. And I, I think that's a good way to approach it. I appreciate that.
I also think too, Kathy, that, you know, as you look at that one-and-a-half million, uh, and you want to keep that fund balance at the two to two-and-a-half million, which I think is, is good. But I don't think that, that it's, and Dana, you said it's not business as usual because for the, for the, um, for the Arts Council, they're having to do a lot of pivoting to do things actively. And there is this side amount of money there that is art in public places that we can utilize to kind of, I suppose, buffer the possibility of having to dip again. Because I think the Visit Dublin is a piece that builds our economy, you know, keeps these businesses going, and that's essential. And so, um, if they have to come back to us for more money or more support because we have the worst-case scenario in hotel motel tax revenues, you know, I, I would like to take a look at not always going to the general fund and using that art in public places fund for the Arts Council so that it can help buffer a little bit us dipping so close to that fifty percent range. Uh, who knows what else you'll need it for? Anyway, those are just my thoughts on that.
All right. If there are no more questions on the hotel motel fund, I'll move on to the recreation fund. So again, starting with the fund summary to kind of orient what we're discussing, Recreation Fund has a six-million-dollar transfer from the general fund program next year. You will see that in the Recreation Fund, the estimated revenue is just over two-million dollars. The traditional, uh, funding balance for the Recreation Fund, according to the Recreation Fund cost recovery policy is much closer to a four-million, four-million split there than a two-million and six-million transfer. So four-million dollars of that six-million-dollar transfer is normal, is traditional, is what we always do. It's the additional two-million dollars that is, uh, new and different. So I don't want you to think that the whole six million is something new. We traditionally do subsidize the recreation program fifty percent pursuant to our policy. Looking at the Recreation Fund revenue, you can see that charges for service revenue is the, the earnings of the Recreation Fund selling recreation programming. And you can see that it's historically been just shy of four-million dollars and was budgeted to be sell, uh, last year as well. You can see that this year it's earned about one-point-one-million dollars. And next year we're, uh, budgeting for about a two-million-dollar year. The large reason for that difference is that this year was very difficult for, uh, camps because of the timing of COVID. There was a lot of, uh, a lot of moving parts there. And typically camps are one of the highest revenue earning components of our recreation program. So the, the goal and the hope there is that with services returning and a more normal, uh, camp-type program, we can see some increased revenue next year. So that's what that estimate is based upon. You'll also see in the bottom and the other financing sources, uh, the budgeted revenue from this year was originally at four-million. Now that represents the original budget. As you'll recall, in the Q3 supplemental, we increased that by one-million dollars. So the revised budget on that is actually five-million dollars, of which we've transferred three-point-nine-million. So that number, that four-million-dollar represents the original budget. Uh, in previous years, we've transferred three-point-six and three-point-seven-five-million dollars. So we are proposing to transfer six-million dollars or fifty percent more from the general fund in twenty-twenty-one. The revenue estimate takes into account the obvious and observable impact of COVID-nineteen on annual memberships as well as program revenues. Year-to-date, the cost recovery for the recreation program is about twenty-two percent, which is well below the historical average, which has been about fifty-five percent. We're estimating cost recovery next year to be in that twenty-five to thirty percent range, uh, based on the proposed budget. And due to the impact of COVID-nineteen, the recreation program will not be able to comply with the cost recovery targets outlined in the cost recovery program in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. You'll, you'll recall obviously that that policy requires us to raise fees. When the fifty percent cost recovery is not met, there will be a fee ordinance, but we're not going to propose much more than inflationary increases in recreation because again, this isn't an expenditure-driven crisis. This is a revenue decline due to an outside influence on our recreation program that's really driving this cost recovery down. This is a very busy slide and I apologize for that, but there's a lot of information to convey and we're going to try to keep it at a high level. I'll, I'll go through it. As you can see on the left-hand side, that is the categories and accounts that make up our Recreation Fund. There are three divisions that operate out of this fund, all supporting recreation activities. Those are obviously recreation services, community events and facilities, facilities related to the DRCRC. So what I've attempted to do here is identify some costs and at the account level so that it's low enough, at, at a high enough level it'll make sense, but a low enough level that it has some meaning. And you can see that in red, I've identified more programming-dependent expenditures. So really, in, in regards to the programming, I should call these classes. So if you're running a recreation class, if a, a yoga class or an art class or a theater class goes off, you're spending money in the red accounts. The, the spending that occurs in the black accounts really occurs independent of the number of classes that are provided. They are, in a sense, if you were looking at fixed and variable costs, the red would be variable, the black would be fixed. Now, that's not a perfect analogy, so I don't want to take that too far because this is too high of a level to do that type of analysis. But that's kind of the idea that I'm getting at here. And what I'm trying to demonstrate is that at the account level, this works for all of the accounts except the other wages account. You can see that we've broken that out by division. And that's because the recreation services leisure division are the other services that provide programs. So these are your, your yoga instructors and things of that nature. The other programs, the DC Ops Leisure, those are part-time employees that work at the recreation center regardless of the program that's occurring. So these are your front desk workers, the people that answer the phone, those types of employees that are less program-dependent. And you can see in the twenty-twenty actual as compared to twenty-twenty budget that the expenditures in the areas that support the facility have remained basically on budget. Whereas the programs and the other wages dedicated to those programs have been significantly below budget. To date, if you look at the twenty-twenty budget for those red lines and add them all up, you'll come just shy of two-point-three-million dollars. We've had actual spending of eighty-six, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars for a budget utilization of thirty-eight-point-two percent, which is pretty low at this point in the year. We should see budget utilization, if you were on budget, closer to about seventy-five percent when I ran these reports. So that, that utilization tells me that at least to some degree, the expenditures that are related to programs and classes occurring are not being spent because classes and programs are not occurring. So those variable costs are being saved. The other component of this is that about seven-million dollars of the budget or about four-point-two-million dollars in spending leads to a budget utilization of sixty-seven percent. So that is that expenditures that are more fixed in nature are continuing to occur despite the service level reduction. And that tells you that the Recreation Fund expenditures are much more fixed than they are variable with regard to classes and with regard to really service delivery levels. And that actually, when, when you start to consider it, it starts to make sense because fixed costs deliver services more efficiently over time. And we have historically had a cost recovery program in place since at least late, the late nineteen nineties that has had a cost recovery in excess of fifty percent, but has also provided a relatively stable level of service prior to this year. So it really is the collapse of service levels and therefore revenues due to the pandemic that have caused this cost recovery. The fixed nature of these expenditures helps you to deliver a more efficient service over time. And that's what we're seeing here. So we see that, I guess, the final three conclusions in those bullets are that the Recreation Fund expenditures are heavily weighted to more fixed versus variable costs. Recreation has reduced expenditures, has services have been reduced. You can see the budget utilization for the class-specific costs is extremely low at thirty-eight percent. And even the budget utilization over, over what I would categorize as more fixed costs is well below the seventy-five percent that we would expect at this point in the year. So budget reductions have been made. Uh, I think it's also important to note that safety-related or sanitization costs have increased despite the service level reduction. So as revenues got, gone down, the cost per unit for each unit of service of revenue has actually gone up. So they're caught in a difficult bind where they have a lot of fixed expenditures and then they have increasing costs on even the marginal revenues that they're able to. that they're able to earn. So what does all this mean? Really, what it means is it's going to be difficult to reduce the budget at the class level. It means we are not going to be able to say, cut all classes, all expenditures related to classes by 20% or cut it by $2 million, because you can see that the $2 million is the marginal cost of providing all of the programs. So it's going to be difficult to find $2 million without cutting in to these less programming-dependent expenditures. In other words, the fixed costs of the recreation program. And the only way we're going to be able to cut into the fixed costs is look at it at a level that is higher than the individual classes. So that is really the program level, and that's kind of what this next slide gets to. And I'd like to point out that this information is from 2018, so the numbers aren't going to work out perfectly. But the numbers aren't what's important. What is important is kind of the larger point, that if you wanted to reduce costs in recreation by $2 million, we've already, I think, established that the variable cost method is going to be very difficult. You're going to have to cut fixed costs. To cut fixed costs, you have to cut more than classes, you have to cut programs. And from a cost efficiency standpoint, you'd want to cut the programs that are the least cost-efficient. So I've ordered these in terms of cost recovery percentage from the most advantageous to the least advantageous in terms of cost recovery. And when you stack all those up and start looking at the direct costs attributable to each program series, you'd have to cut everything below the yellow line in order to cut $2 million in direct program-related costs. And depending on the revenue recovery aspect of those programs, you may have to cut up to the orange line if there's some revenue cuts that are associated with those program cuts. So you can see, it would be very difficult to maintain anything resembling our current recreation program without this additional transfer. I'm sure that it is possible, but it will not look like what it has historically looked like in order to cut that $2 million. And to give you an idea of what it looks like, this chart kind of gives you that outline. With that being said, we again have a couple of different policy options here. It's probably not the only options, but there are at least two for consideration. We're proposing no reduction in services in that we fund the shortfall with a transfer. We're utilizing an additional $2 million from the general fund in order to normally operate all services associated with the Recreation Fund. And I want to point out here what I mean by "normal operation," because I really don't mean "normal operation" as in businesses is normal, we're recovering 55%, everything is good. Because we have continued to evaluate new revenue opportunities, and those are frankly a little difficult in this environment. So that's one side of the coin. But on the other side of the coin, we've continued to minimize expenditures and seek efficiencies in order to minimize that $2 million transfer. And to do that, I would point to the budget utilization referred to earlier. The variable costs have been cut, 38% is rather low, but the fixed costs have been cut from what should be 75% to closer to 67% or about a 10% reduction in fixed costs. So there have been and will continue to be actions to keep the cost recovery as high as possible. But even those actions are likely to result in the cost recovery to 20% or 30%. But I don't want you to believe that we're satisfied with that and we're not going to continue to take actions under that policy option to continue to reduce that transfer. The other is a reduction in services and an elimination of the $2 million transfer. In order for these, you'd have to consider the reduction or elimination of programs as demonstrated on the immediately prior slide or programming as demonstrated in the red areas of the previous slide. You'd also consider significant changes to the DRCRC operations, including hours of operation, customer service standards, et cetera, that may yield you some savings in order to reduce that transfer. And then, of course, you could always consider staff reductions and former part-time staffing. And with that, I've completed kind of my presentation on the Recreation Fund. Myself and other members of that team are available for questions.
Hey, Matt, this probably, maybe it's a naive question, I don't know. There's about a $4 million that didn't get spent in the budgeted from, at this point today. If you can go back to that slide, I think it was, we had like $9 million budgeted actually spent right now at 5. So, you know, at the end of the year, let's say we have, you know, $3 million that we didn't spend. So is that reflected in, do you carry that over next year? Or how does that, how does that not, that savings, I guess I call it savings, money we didn't spend, how does that help us next year? Is it just part of the fund transfer?
Sure. So to the extent that the expenditures are reduced below that budget, it means I can reduce the transfer from the general fund this year, preserving fund balance in the general fund. So that really results in a higher general fund balance in this year. Part of that, I want to be clear on that, that $9.3 million number is a little high. There's $700,000 in the transfers and advances. And this gets into the cost recovery policy amendments that we did two years ago in order for the Recreation Fund to support the North Pool and the DRCRC renovation. So when doing the budget for 2020 with that debt service payment being a complete unknown, we had to budget $700,000. Ultimately, we did not have to make a payment in 2020 because of the timing of that and the structure of that bond deal. So that $700,000 is not necessary, but needed to be budgeted last year because it could have been necessary. We know now that the bonds have been sold and the debt schedule's in place exactly what the debt payment will be next year, and it'll be at that $189,105 in principal only, because the interest on that debt is able to be paid for out of bond premium. That will continue in '21 and partially in '22. And then we'll have to make a full debt payment if we continue along with that policy guidance. So I just want to be clear on what's happening in that account. That $700,000 wasn't a mistake. It was a needed number for a budget, but it ended up not being needed because of the structure of the deal. That represents about a fourth of that $4 million, so I think that's important. The other kind of important thing to note is, I mean, the Recreation Center was shut down for three months this year, between March to June. And there are certainly some costs that continued on related to salary expenditures during that time period, but there were maybe some fixed cost savings that wouldn't normally be available if the Recreation Center was operational for the whole year. So I don't know that we will be able to see the expenditure reductions next year that we saw this year because we're not intending to shut it down. For example, there were no sanitation costs during shutdown, which is something I would expect us to see for 12 months next year. So that's part of the reason why this year's budget number is so different is we had a very interesting 2020 thus far.
Okay, thanks. And CARES dollars for the revenue, I know we're not looking at overall revenues right now, but CARES dollars, will they help? Are they already figured into what we would consider general fund revenues for next year when you're looking at all these numbers?
The CARES dollars are going to be factored into this year. They have to be spent, they have to be encumbered by December 31st and spent very quickly thereafter. I think I have 30 or 60 days to spend it. So they will impact this year only. What we'll see is a lot of the recreation spending to date is reimbursable with CARES funding. So to the extent that I have expenditures listed on this spreadsheet as $5.1 million, we have not begun to reallocate those CARES dollars by funds that's seeking reimbursement. But I would anticipate that there is a lot of reimbursement in the Recreation Fund, and that number could move substantially down. But to me, that's great from a cost recovery standpoint, but I don't know that it helps us to understand what next year looks like. Because next year, there isn't going to be a CARES Act. And if there is, that's great, I'll work it into the analysis when it exists. But I think that $5.1 million number is the right number for understanding our budget this year, knowing that the CARES Act money will essentially reduce expenditures in these funds, the operating funds, in a totality by about $2.4 million.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Matt, I have a question about those CARES dollars. So the reimbursement to the general fund when those monies are received, are those already considered into the general fund balance and where we are relative to our policy?
No. So the way that these CARES Act dollars have to be accounted for is not particularly straightforward, and I don't like it, but I have to do it, so I will. All of the $2.4 million is being put into the fund that you created a couple of weeks ago, Fund 265. So that Fund 265 will have $2.4 million in revenue that sits in it, not our general fund. From that, our accounting department will take eligible transactions and do entries that move them essentially from the fund that they occurred in to Fund 265 in order to spend down the $2.4 million that's in that fund. And it will reduce the expenditures of the fund that currently houses it today. So if anything, if we're trying to be transparent and compare years to years, these dollars distort reality in a way that's not helpful. It would be much more helpful if instead of taking the expenditure and moving it, I moved the revenue, because then we have an accurate record of expenditures year-over-year and revenue year-over-year. But that's not what's permissible, so I can't do it. So this is not going to impact the general fund balance at all, except insofar as to raise it as transactions that are currently expenditures in the general fund are moved to this COVID-19 fund.
My second question relative to the Recreation Fund. I did ask and received, thanks, Matt and his team for that, kind of some use history on the swimming pool. But do we have use history on the balance of the facilities and programs there? And, you know, it would be interesting, you know, you proposed two different options for us, and I realize there are more that it presented to you to help us start talking about something. But it would be helpful to know what is being used and to what level so that if we get into the reduction or maybe of hours or programs or something like that, to know where would those reductions most likely take place? What kinds of programs would they be? And how frequently are they being used and present? Because, you know, we want to offer as much as we possibly can and we want to offer efficiently, and we want to offer the things that people are using. Likely, it's like everything else, there are some things that aren't being utilized nearly at the levels that other things are. And I don't know the balance of council's appetite for that. But if we get in that situation, I'd like to know what are people appreciating? What is making their lives more normal and good and what not so much?
One thing I would say, we have that kind of information regarding all the rec programming and DRCRC usage, so that's information that we can...
I think, Chris, that's what I was kind of asking for early when I was talking about utilization, some just some understanding on what's being used, what's not being used. If we have to cut, at least we would try to do it as, you know, as least severe as we could.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, because when you, you know, when you get stuck having to make the hard decisions, you want to make the right hard decisions. And it's difficult to do that without that type of utilization. So it would be really helpful to be able to have those numbers, Chris. I think that's the right direction.
And for full transparency, some of the swim teams had asked about using the rec center swimming pool and wanting to rent it. And so I had inquired, well, how much are we using? Can we afford to give some more hours of the pool up in exchange for revenue? Not just give them away, but sell them. You know, if our pool isn't full all of the time or if there are some times where maybe people could come a half hour earlier or half hour later, is there another hour or two there that we could sell?
Hey, Matt, could you put that slide back up again? So one of the things, yeah, there we go. One of the things that I look at is what we, maybe when it pops back up here again, because I didn't memorize the number. There we go. When I look at what we actually spent in '18 and we actually spent in '19, they were hovering around $7 million. You know, one of the questions I would like to know is, what would the programming look like if we said, let's spend at what we spent in '19 before this thing started? And gave staff a, you know, whatever, I think it's 2% planned raise, right? So whatever the actual salary is, but programmatically left it flat to what it has been. That looks like it would be 3/4 of a million or a million dollars less. And ask staff to say, if that was our funding level, which means we're not cutting what we did in '19, we're going to replicate what we did in '19 and basically replicate what we did in '18, what would that kind of a program look like? Sort of flat spending versus flat budgeting, if you will. It seems to me that might be a good way to really say, and what would be a difference from what we did in '19 to '21 that would justify? And then you could look at potentially, you know, what's being used or what's not. But it seems to me either we've got some extra in here or we're doing something more up and above. So I think that would be a, in my opinion, that would be a fair request to ask staff to say, keep it flat from what we've actually spent before this thing started with recognition of salary and benefit reality. What would that look like? I would be very interested in that.
We can look into that and get back to you on that.
Okay, anything else on recreation? What else you got for us, Matt?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Couple of discussions on enterprise funds. Good news here, no budget transfers beyond the capital expenditures, but I think it's important to go over them in a little bit of detail. So for the water fund, we have that top table. Your screen's not up, so just, sorry, thank you, Dana. All right, we'll try it now. So that top table represents the revenue to the water fund. We kept revenue estimates for next year basically flat from this year. There was a slight decline in interest revenue due to the decline in interest rates. So I think we have a fairly conservative revenue estimate for the 2021 budget. I also wanted to note, as was part of our capital discussions, but I think it's important to note as part of this discussion that we will be bringing forward an ordinance in November to increase water fees by 3% in 2021 as was part of the water sewer study rate report recommendation that we talked about as part of the capital budget. So overall, we have water fund revenues totaling just shy of $1.2 million. In the expenditure side, we have a very flat budget. The decrease from the 2020 budget to the 2021 budget is almost all in that capital outlay, and that is a result of cash-funded capital projects that occurred in 2020 that are obviously not going to reoccur in 2021. So that just takes care of the, a large majority of the variance between 2020 and 2021. You can see that I'm predicting this to go back to that fund summary sheet since the enterprise funds aren't on it. A beginning cash balance in the water fund of $11.1 million. I think it's important to note that the fund balance as of last week was about $12.7 million. It's not unusual for funds that have large capital expenditures to have this kind of variance in actual versus projected fund balance. We'll see some large capital bills come through this fall likely that'll bring those key numbers closer together. Based on those estimated revenue and expenditures, we have an underencumbered fund balance of about $10.7 million in 2021. So we have no concerns or overriding issues that we need to talk about as part of the water fund, but as an important service delivery component of the city's operations, I wanted to highlight it here.
Matt, can you tell me a little bit about the charges for service? And I would not expect such a decrease in the charges for service in the water fund.
That is a combination of the $3.05 that we charge per 1,000 cubic feet of water. I believe it's collected. It's collected as part of the water sewer fee by Columbus.
Right, but is this, but that that decrease, is that suggesting that water usage itself went down in the city?
No, I'm I'm budgeting it flat. I'm projecting that it'll be, that it'll probably be more than that, but just in order to be conservative, I left the the budget number alone. The decrease is really an interest income is where that budgeted decrease occurs. We're we're basically on track this year with a $76,000 in revenue. That's about 75% of the million. So I had some hesitation with increasing it, even though we are increasing rates by 3%, I wanted to be a little bit conservative.
So the the decrease in the actual number for 2020 versus 2019, 2018 is not representative of the time period?
No, those those are also can be some tap fees for water lines, and depending upon where Bridge Park construction was at, those can be fairly large. So the amount of development that can occurs, those tap fees can vary greatly year to year and are really not a reliable source of revenue year over year. So that's what I would read that decline in, but I could investigate that in a little more detail.
Thanks. I wouldn't necessarily be surprised if our water usage went down and maybe we would budget a little differently. If some of our, and I don't know what, I don't know what the right number would be, more people are at home and less people are in an office. I don't know what the net effect of that would be, but it might might be worth at least understanding a little bit for me.
Hey, Matt, what, a couple of questions. How much will the 3% increase bring in annually? And secondly, what fund level do you like to see this water fund at normally?
I'll I'll run the math on the 3% and give you an accurate figure. Fund level on this fund is very difficult. We have historically talked about it being 25% of asset value. And that puts it at about a $16 million fund balance. I think I would like to see that. That has been historically what we have said regarding these funds, but it is very difficult in the literature to find guidance on what an appropriate enterprise fund balance is. And we, by comparison to other cities, have a very young water and sewer system, which gives us a great deal of benefit to maybe build up a fund balance that a much older system wouldn't have. So I think that's a difficult question to answer, but I would, I would, as I've approached this problem, I think I would say the following, I would like to see fund, the fund balance increase two out of every three years. Then I know I pretty much have the right level, not increase a lot, but just have a general slope upward so that we're more financially secure in future years than we are this year. Until we hit about that 25% of net assets mark, which would be about 16 million.
Okay. That'll give us some direction. I mean, if you're going to increase by 3%, my my thinking is, is that you're doing that because your fund balance isn't as high as you'd like it to be. But then, understanding the fund balance also helps us keep our fees reasonable for people because there are so many fees, so many expenses coming to property owners and such that, you know, we don't want to be, we don't want to always going back to the well, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The difficulty with these water fund balances, we're funding a lot of capital improvements in cash out of the water fund. And you'll see a decrease in fund balance when you make, you know, a $981,000 capital improvement in one year. That's that very likely is a 20-year improvement. So we're spending a million dollars where capitalized, maybe we would only debt finance 50, and we'd see the fund balance grow over time. So it's very difficult to say, oh, the fund balance decreased, that's bad, or the fund balance increased, that's good. Because if we have to do a 20-year improvement every year, then that 50 doesn't really represent the true cost. So it's something where we have to take a deeper dive in it, and we have to continually look at what what are we improving and how long does the improvement last? And what's that doing to the fund balance? And I think if we wanted to see a true impact on fund balance, we would probably debt finance more things in the water fund, which I know sounds strange when you're sitting on a $10 million balance, which is why we haven't historically done that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll continue on to the sewer fund. It is a very similar story, which is good news. Again, we're having some conservative revenue estimates. We're at about 75, 80% of the budget in 2020 versus 2020 actual, so the budget is the revenue budget is the same. And again, we're going to bring forward a 3% increase in those sanitary sewer fees for 2021. Again, I've estimated a decline in the interest revenue. It's important to note here that we have some other financing sources. The other financing sources in 2018 are really a result of bonds and are not necessarily tied into, excuse me, the transfers from the general or the the Fund 401, the CIP fund. In 2020, we budgeted $200,000 from the Capital Improvements Fund to the Sewer Fund for sewer extensions. We have not yet made that transfer. That $471,000 is bond premium from the $6 million bond sale earlier. So that's deposited into this fund because this fund makes those debt service payments. So that $471,000 by year end will be $671,000 because of that transfer. This year, we've also programmed for 2021 an additional transfer of $150,000 from the general fund pursuant to the sewer extension policy. So we'll begin transferring $350,000 in revenue next year. You can see the 2020 budget is very similar to the 2021 budget, except for there's about a $440,000 increase in debt service. And that's due to a number of factors. One is the $6 million in debt that was issued in 2020. That first payment is again due in 2021. So that's part of it. We are budgeting for the $1.85 million in debt to be issued in 2021. We may or may not have to make those, that payment similar to how we had to budget but not make the earlier recreation payment. And then the other factor that's occurring is we issued a significant amount of debt in 2017 for the sewer, and the bond premium is paid off in the first three years. So now we're making the full debt service payment for that debt that was issued in 2017. So all three of those factors together give you that $600,000 increase in debt service from 2020 to 2021. And that's one of the reasons why we're seeing that increase in transfers from the general fund and the Capital Improvement Fund to offset for those extensions related to, the debt service related to those extensions. Again, to look at the fund summary, similar to how we've done for other funds, the year-to-date balance in the Sewer Fund is 6.5 million. I'm projecting a year-end balance of about 6.1 million. Again, a lot of that has to do with capital expenditures being budgeted but not yet paid. The revenue and expenditures lead us to have an unencumbered fund balance at year end of about $5.6 million. That amount is is probably likely a conservative number. The Sewer Fund has been very flat for the past past three years, right around $6 million. And these numbers on this spreadsheet would lead me to believe that that's likely to be the case in 2021 as well. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Hey, buddy?
All right, thank you. I'm going to take a, take an opportunity to go over some of the reorganization that was mentioned and has previously been discussed as part of the 2020 operating budget. Frankly, the first kind of smaller reorganization we're going to talk about is the Division of Information Technology and Performance Analytics. The table at the top represents the expenditures from the IT division in 18, 19, and 20, and represents the the spending of the Performance Analytics, IT, and select expenditures from the City Manager's Office related to IT in 2021. So this is a direct comparison to to see how has the budget changed as a as a function of this reorg with all of the expenditures in the same pot. And you can see there that expenditures have increased by about $110,000. 100% of that variance can be explained by the increase of the net positions in Performance Analytics. That is, we are adding a data manager position in Performance Analytics, essentially backfilling that position. That was the manager of GIS as when it was part of the IT department. Now that will be a, that person, the previous data manager, became the Director of Performance Analytics, and we're backfilling the data manager position. That has an estimated cost of about $145,000, including salary and benefits to backfill that position. So the increase as part of this reorg is really related directly to that position. Breaking these individual components back apart in 2021, we can see that IT will have a division budget of about $4.7 million, Performance Analytics a little less than a million. And in the office of the City Manager, the expenditures related to the activities of the CIO are about $513,000. And there I have just some short description of what each division will be aligned and focused on as part of this realignment. There are no notable changes from IT in 2020. For Performance Analytics, again, the addition of the data manager position. Within the office of the City Manager, these expenditures again are only related to the CIO. So the CIO position will move to a contractual position. There was also an administrative support three position that was formerly in the IT unit that will move to the City Manager's Office and will now support IT and Performance Analytics from that office. So those are some of the salaries and costs that have moved around as part of this reorganization. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Hey, Matt, are you, are you only want to talk about reorg questions now or general IT questions? Whatever. So I had sort of two general IT questions. What percent of our services are now in the cloud versus hosted? And as we make that shift, I'm assuming we're going to continue to do more of that. I guess that's an assumption I would like clarified. What is that going to do to our expenses? I would assume over time we would see some reductions there. That's sort of my first question. And then my second question with people working from home, security issues, et cetera, any increase in spend needed for the, for that next year?
I think I refer to Mark on that if he's, he's on or Homer.
Yeah, I'm on, Dana, thanks. For the, for the latter question on the increase in spin, we don't anticipate that at this point. We took care of most of that in the spring in response to the pandemic. As for the percent of services that are hosted or managed, first is on-prem, hosted by ourselves. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Is the, is the plan sort of over time to move most things to the cloud or what's the latest thinking on that, Mark?
Yeah, that's still our strategy, go forward. And typically, the budget offset is a, would be a lesser capital spend and an increased operating spend.
But we're not seeing, we're not making a jump towards that in next year because he said the budget's flat?
Correct.
Okay.
At this point,
Before we finish that, Mark, was there anything in the capital budget, though, that that led us that direction? I can't recall if that, if that applies here or not.
No, not yet. So we've gotten to a place where most of our business applications are hosted or in the cloud.
I was having some discussion about the cloud during the capital, and I didn't remember.
Yeah.
He punted that to the operating, maybe that's
That's exactly why, yeah, yeah.
The next really big step for us would be infrastructure as a service and 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 moving those things, which we currently have on-prem still and a significant footprint. And that's where those capital costs come in on the infrastructure side for servers and storage network.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I don't want to jump in if someone, mine's more general, I guess. In looking at all these numbers in the reorganization, it is difficult for me to understand, as we've talked about our council goals, how the reorganization is moving in that direction, which I reviewed, Dana, you know, a lot of the information that you had sent out earlier about, you know, the information technology and performance analytics, but I guess I I just would like to hear from either you, Dana, or or the ones over these departments is, you know, making these changes and the why of what we're looking for. How do you feel that these changes will significantly move us in the direction of where we're going in our communication with our residents, the service? It's very difficult, I think, to look at line items and numbers and understand if we're actually moving the needle. So I don't know if it's Mark or the City Manager's Office, to help us understand how these changes are going to significantly get us, you know, closer to those goals, because I see a lot about PiWorks and all that, but I, in all honesty, there are words unless you explain to us, you know, how the reorganization is, is helps us with the why of what we do. Does that make sense?
I think, I'll take a stab at it, and I'll ask the Calvary to back me up here if I need it, but you know, I I think what we're reflecting here is the exact thing you asked for, and that's, that's, first of all, I believe in, I believe in, I know, our culture has been a measure oriented. You know, I can show you lots of measures that we, and I've shared with you numerous times that, you know, I do ask my division directors to explain, you know, how do we know they're winning and how do they back that with measure? Your goal became certain measures that you were interested in. We had a work session last year where you narrowed those down that were most important to you. And those are the ones we've been focused on, as I shared in the packet that I have provided you from my mid-year discussion about, you know, how we were structuring behind that and where we were going with those more specifically, and that's where we're giving our priority. So that, that's a piece of it. We talked a little bit about, you know, this, this will ultimately land in a dashboard configuration, which we want to be outward facing at some point. And we are working on and developing that. Some of that I shared with you. I think you saw some of the ideas, the pictures and the like, and have seen that on more than one occasion, and what that would look like. The reorganization itself, I understand that, you know, when you look at the line items and we're shifting people around and we've broken people out, and that's a bit confusing. There's no shell gaming going on there. It's simply lines of organization, lines of reporting, and trying to get people, you know, tucked under the right supervi, supervision and and direction, if you will. So that's, that's a budget, you know, type of thing that you got to do in the weeds. But in the big picture, you know, we, you know, we, and I, you know, and I know the PiWorks thing is something that may not resonate a lot with people, but I'm a, I'm a big, huge believer in continuous improvement, always have been. That ties into measurements. Those measurements tie into processes. Without process analysis and process development, you know, what good is measurement? They're mutually supportive and they help each other. That ties into innovation, creativity, and in some cases, reinvention, which we're in a constant mode of. So all these things tie in together between process analysis and then tying that into measurement. Don't forget, too, that you know, we, we also had a discussion involving IT about moving away from some of our legacy systems and getting systems that are more accessible for data, you know, pulling data, which helps us get to this dashboard type thing. This is a fairly, and we briefed last year, fairly long process to get there. I think we we have made great strides towards that, which I also shared in that packet of info. So I think, I think the organizational alignment, the additional staffing certainly supports your emphasis in the direction. I would close that my comments on this to say, yes, we've got work to do. And yes, we've got work to do with you all in revisiting and getting into the specifics more and updating you on progress towards this goal. And that should happen in, you know, the form of these work sessions and the like, which have been a little bit hard to do this year, but you know, it's not that we're not, we're not actively working on it. I would certainly defer to a combination of Homer, Mark, Brandon, of course, that's our Director of Performance Analytics, and Doug, I believe, who's That's our director of performance analytics and Doug, I believe he's on, if anyone wants to, wants to chime in on that.
Good evening. This is Brandon. I just wanted to add one thing that was, that was great summation Dana, the, about the engagement of citizens, that, that's something too, that I think we kind of miss out on sometimes. We have different groups that focus on that, but one of the focuses, in my mind at least, to performance analytics and all this process improvement, innovation, making these systems easier to connect to and access and, and kind of cross-connect is directly targeted at citizens. So for instance, our Go Dublin application, those types of things is looking for different ways to engage you all, engage to the whole citizenry, you know, during service creation, during service provisioning and, and enhancement. So, so that's just one piece I didn't want to kind of leave out there is that we're just, we're heavily involved with all the different groups that go out and talk to everyone. So.
I think that's really helpful. I think as I read through the information Dana and looked at this and, and I've noticed with, with, and I just saw Doug pop up. There's, there's so much information here. There's so much progress that I think that we've made, but I don't know that we really appreciate exactly how the reorganization is helping us move in that direction. And I think it's simply a communication piece with us, at least it is for me, to understand the progress we've made, how moving it into different segments under different people are going to move us even farther. What we hope to do in the next year with the reorg, I think is important to know. It's a very complex and, and technical ask that we're making. And we're probably making it from a, from a level that's not as expert at all as the people that work in it. You know, we know what the possibilities are. We certainly don't know how you implement it. So for me, as we, as this reorganization comes about and people fit into the places that you have them, it would be really helpful to just be updated and maybe a few little workshops and lessons on what that looks like. Even pie works, I'll be honest with you, I had to go back and read Lean Ohio to understand exactly all that you talk about because I really never really appreciated what it was, Kazon and all of that. So it's a learning curve for us to help us get you, get us all where we need to be. I guess that's what I'm saying here.
Yeah, and I know for a fact, we really need some more work sessions, you know, on that and spend time dialoguing. And we can put a lot of stuff in writing, but the discussion is what's really.
So much better.
I didn't need to step on you.
No, no, you're fine. I just, I think that's it. I think it's the discussion and I know it's hard in this time, but so many questions and so many things that they can help us understand better since we move forward and give you the support that you need. So.
Well, I, I don't want to add anything if you've gotten your answer there. I was just going to reinforce kind of what Brandon is saying, that when you look at a performance analytics, you're seeing a focus of us towards something that's kind of a direct result of something that you have been asking for around data and analytics. Now we have a person and a group who's kind of focused on that. And what you see happening with me has a more external focus, whereas IT has traditionally been focused on the operations of the enterprise. And we didn't really have anybody who could go out and talk about augmented reality and, and engaging with citizens and, and smart city types of things and gathering requests and those kinds of things there. So I don't think that the budget itself was intended to reflect significantly some of those goals. I think it was to make us more efficient and able to do them better. But that, if you're looking for, how do we see how this budget proposes us forward to what we're trying to do? Hopefully you would see us being, having different types of reporting structures so that we can focus on those areas. You're not going to see those results in that, but you'll see us focusing organizationally in those places that you have put a priority.
I appreciate that Doug. I think that really has helped. I think we do really need to have these conversations because this is such an important aspect for us and it was such a big goal. I know it was for, I know, I know all of us felt this way. But watching it move forward has been difficult to follow because it's moving fast, we're reorganizing. Some of it we simply don't understand. You're, you're moving in different directions, like you said, sort of the aspirational, the operational, the implementation of it. It's a lot to follow and it would be really helpful to get, you know, some, some workshops on it to understand it better and to support you the best we can.
Sure. And if I could just chime in with just one last point. You know, one of the things that we've done in terms of realigning it the way we have is to get some internal efficiencies as well. I would submit to you that a lot of the response that we had in terms of being able to adjust to, you know, work from home and things of that nature, were really facilitated by the, the reorganization that we've already done. IT was able to respond and, and was very focused on being able to get those assets deployed out there. And at the same time, Brandon was able to, you know, get focused on the work that we need to do in terms of, you know, pulling our strategy and our, our dashboard together that you're going to see in the future. So there has been some nimbleness and some savings that we've had in terms of efficiencies that I think that this reorganization has really facilitated.
Good to hear. Okay, anything else before I move on to the next topic?
Thank you, Mayor. Sticking with the reorganization theme, we're going to look at the operations department. Looking at the organization of this section of the city from 2020 to 2021, you can see a change in the divisions and the department as a whole. The total budget in 2020 for this section of the city was $43.7 million. In 2021, we're projecting, we're proposing a budget of $43.8 million. With regards to salary and benefits, the 2020 salary and benefits were $19.8 million. That would fall to $19.4 million in 2021. That $500,000 difference is something we'll examine at the end of this. That is related mainly to the refuse and solid waste contract, we need to spend a little bit of time discussing. One kind of quirky thing about this org chart that I just wanted to point out is you'll notice that asset management and support services do not have a box around them, nor does the Parks and Recreation Director. And they are administrative units or divisions, but they don't have their own budget. So that's why they don't have a box because nothing is going to be there. They roll up into the budget, in this case above them, the Deputy City Manager, Chief Operating Officer budget item. And you'll see that as we look at the org chart later in this presentation as well. So if there's no line around, then it just means that the budget for that division or administrative unit exists one level up or one level down. With regards to this reorganization, there were three divisions that were relatively unchanged from 2020 to 2021. And you can see that movement there among recreation services, community events and outreach and engagement. And we can see that there's very little budgetary change between these three divisions between these two years. Two former divisions were, were combined into one new division, the Facilities and Fleet Management Division. You can see that combining the, these divisions into their grand totals led to a budgetary reduction from 2020 to 2021. And that is really a result of changing personnel in the Fleet and Facilities Division. We'll examine that on the reorganization and reclassification slide. But ultimately, a fleet director position was molded into the division director of the Facilities and Fleet Management Division. So that comprises a significant degree of that budgetary decrease. Unfortunately, that's where it stops getting simple. This is a little bit more complicated. But it basically, I just wanted to break out the budgetary components and duties and costs associated with selected activities that were moved from 2020 to 2021 and try to, try to explain that in as simply, as simply as possible. So if you look at the Parks and Recreation Department in green there, you can see that that department was split in two ways. The Director of Park Development and Public Art were moved to the Deputy City Manager Department in red. The Purple Right-of-Way Maintenance was moved to the Future Division of Public Service. So those two services were previously both housed in that division and are now broken apart. You can see that all of park operations, that kind of darker blue line were moved to the Division of Public Service. So there were no changes in the Park Operations Services, but they are now combined into the Public Service Division. Similarly, with the Division of Public, or the Department of Public Works, the Director's Office there, all of the services previously housed in the Director's part of Public Works are now moved to the Deputy City Manager's area of the budget. Engineering was split, Capital Project Maintenance, sorry, Management and Development in orange. So expenditures and personnel related with those activities remain in engineering. Personnel expenditures and activities related to traffic and safety, mobility and sign and electrical services are now in a new division of transportation and mobility. So that is a, a change from 2020 to 2021 for those particular services. Additionally, Streets and Utilities Operations were split. Utility and Stormwater Operations in light blue were moved from that division into the Engineering Division. So now Engineering has all utility related services, the maintenance of utilities and the capital construction of those utilities are now housed under Engineering. So there's some symmetry there. Street Maintenance and Environmental and Solid Waste were moved from the Street Operations Division into Public Service. So from a budgetary perspective, those were the actions and personnel that have moved. And there's quite a bit of movement that has taken place here, which is why we have kind of a complicated chart. But when you sum it all together, the bottom line, so what is? The 2020 budget for each of these divisions as a whole was $23.6 million. That bottom middle number there. The 2021 budget is $24.2 million. And all of that increase is related to the refuse contract. So you can see that there's, there's very little budgetary change despite all the moving around. There's very little budgetary impact. And you can see there that there are several different divisions, budgetary divisions housed within the Public Service Division. That's really a function of the variety of services that that division provides across multiple funds. And that's really a result of those multiple funds lead to multiple divisions. And the Deputy City Manager, as is the case with Finance and the City Manager, has multiple divisions related to their particular activities in the 310 Division and then some administrative actions in the 390 Division. Hey Matt, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you pause there for a second and just ask Megan. You can go on to the next slide if you want. I think it's appropriate. I'd just like to ask Megan if she has anything she would like to add to this. Obviously this is her primary initiative. Matt's done a great job of showing how all these, how the dollars flow with that. Megan, anything you want to, you want to add to that?
Not at this point. Matt's done a really good job, I think, outlining all the changes and the moving parts. But you know, overall, it is generally a net zero impact on the budget. He touched on many of the goals and also the operational organization changes. So if there's any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt.
So I, I would ask Megan, so what's the net, net of all of this, Megan?
Net, net in terms of funding or in terms of operational?
Operational, yeah. Operation and strategy, just sort of, at the end of the day, we did this because we now can do what?
So at the end of the day, I did have several overarching goals as we went about looking at the organization. One of the primary goals was to provide clarity of ownership and responsibilities. And that goes towards the piece where, excuse me, that goes towards the piece of the organization where we're consolidating both the right-of-way maintenance that resides in parks as well as the right-of-way maintenance that has resided in Street and Utilities Operations. So by consolidating those functions, that will provide clarity of ownership. So those functions will reside under one director. Up until this point, we, you know, we've had certain staff that mow certain areas of our property and then other staff that mow other areas. So we can take a comprehensive look at how we do things and how we organize this and where, how we organize and where our resources go. So that's one goal that's accomplished. Another one is to take a more comprehensive and organized approach to managing our transportation systems. So we've had transportation functions residing in engineering as well as planning. And I think it's important that we have a dedicated staff that's taking a look at our transportation for vehicles and all other modes, bicycle pedestrians, all together as a transportation system, as opposed to just looking at the pieces and parts separately in different work units. And also I think it's important that we elevate transportation and mobility up to a division level. That's a trend that's occurring across the country and I think it'll help keep us on the leading edge of transportation and mobility. I know it's also, you know, year after year in the surveys, it's something that residents are very interested in. It's something, there's a lot of interaction with city council and that staff and a lot of interest in transportation mobility. So that's one of the other goals that's accomplished. Another is succession planning. So some of the positions that Matt will show you have to do with being in furtherance of succession planning. And then also with the implementation and success of the Go Dublin app, we have been monitoring the usage of that closely and more and more people are using that. And it's driving more and more of our work processes. So by organizing a work unit around the Go Dublin, both management, monitoring, and also having a crew dedicated to Go Dublin responses, that will help other crews be able to focus on the work plans that they've developed. Because Go Dublin right now, those responses are taken care of by whichever crew, you know, we assign it to on a daily basis. And, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's disruptive because that sounds negative, but it takes them off of working their work plans. So that's one other thing that's accomplished is by creating a Go Dublin crew and a work unit that is focusing on management of Go Dublin from the very beginning, the technology piece, all the way to when the actual request is closed. So those are some of the higher arching. There's, there's quite a few other changes that are accomplished, but those are the big, those are the big ones that I'd like to highlight.
Thank you, Megan. Makes good sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Megan, in, in doing this reorganization, identifying the responsibilities and such, and I know that you had an opportunity, you've worked in so many of these areas to, to identify them yourself. How many, how, how much of the suggestions came from, you know, staff level, from, from the ones working out in the field, you know, crew leaders, the directors? Is that where we, I noticed in one of the things that I read here that Dana had given me that there were something like a jury of, where you looked at so many suggestions by staff and it was juryed and like there were down to like 16, how many of these kinds of suggestions drove some of this reorganization?
This was many, many months of conversations and having input from all different levels of staff. We involve bargaining unit, personnel and leadership, all the way to, you know, crew supervisors, administrators, engineers, directors. It was a little challenging and it did hinder the process a little bit once COVID-19 occurred because I had these big plans to have big group facilitated work sessions that would garner more ideas and feedback. But I do think that there was quite a bit of input obtained and feedback was heard from staff. So I mean, this probably was over about a six-month period that we worked on this.
Okay. Will we be getting Dana, will we be getting some more updates from you on, on the reorganization? Because it's, it's, there's a lot of complexity here, especially in the economic development piece where you're bundling planning and economic development and, and building standards all together. Will you be giving us a little, some updates on how that's all?
Yeah, those three divisions have always been bundled together. So nothing new there really to speak of, other than the new position of Deputy City Manager, Chief Finance and Development Officer. And probably the bundling with finance is the new, new launch to that. Certainly be happy to, to, you know, talk to council anytime about the progress or answer your questions. So however you see fit with that.
Okay. Yeah, be helpful going forward, I think.
Okay, anything else there? I'm sorry, Matt, did you have more?
I did, sorry.
I apologize.
So I just wanted to outline the, the reclassifications pursuant to this reorganization, as you can imagine, with a, with a much. As you can imagine, with the much movement, there's some positions that are being reclassified as a result of that movement. You can see the complete list here of the, the divisions that are impacted, the titles in 2021 and the reclassified positions in 2020. I think it's important to point out from a budgetary perspective, because there were no new positions created, the fiscal impact of these reclassifications is fairly minimal. We're estimating it to be about $30,000 across the department. So in terms of fiscal impact, it's again, pretty minimal. You can see that there are several directors, both reclassified and created as part of this reorg. So there are positions that are moving up, there are positions that are moving sideways, essentially, and there are several positions that are leading to budgetary savings that kind of lead into that figure. And that's all I have on the reorg before we move into Solid Waste Contract. So I guess I'll pause there. There are additional questions?
The only other thing I would add is that just for perhaps, well, for all of our council members, and I know Councilmember Keeler, this might be his first, first time, what you'll see introduced at upcoming budget, upcoming council is the Compensation Plan Ordinance, which takes these changes and puts them into the, what we call the Compensation Plan. So that will come to council as well in the form of an ordinance, you know, consistent with and behind the budget process.
Okay, any other questions for Matt on the operation reorg? Okay, Matt, what you got next?
All right, I just wanted to quickly touch on the Solid Waste Disposal Contract because it's a significant change in this budget this year compared to last year. So you can see the budget numbers from the 2020 budget and see that we budgeted about $2.8 million for refuse recycling and yard waste, the monthly fee and the household count that led to that fee. The senior fee is included in that, so that is a component of that amount. We have a $30,000 appropriation for recycling bins and refuse cans. And then critically, we didn't have any expenditures budgeted for composting or the recycling processing agreement. So in 2020, we had a budget of just under $2.9 million. In 2021, we're budgeting about $3.4 million. And you can see the numbers again that led to that budget. We had an increase in the monthly household fee, an increase in the household count, an increase in the composting program, and then an increase in the recycling processing agreement, including an increase since we first spoke two weeks ago regarding that agreement. So it went up $20,000 since we last spoke, so I wanted to point that out. We've seen that. Kind of the details of the factors that have led to that increase are the household per month rate increase of $1.33 or 7.4%. We had an increase in the number of households and the increase in recycling processing fees and some discussion and description of this. So prior to 2020, the city paid $0 for this service. In 2020 and 2021, the recycling service contract included risk reward profit sharing. So in summary, the commodity profits are split 50/50 up to about $40 per ton, meaning that if we sell it at a profit for the first $40, we split it 50/50. Above $40, runt keeps that amount. But unfortunately, we're not in that situation. There is no profit sharing. Or in the other situation, which is if it's more costly to process recyclables, has been the case this year and is expected next year, Dublin's required to pay 100% of the cost differential up to a maximum of $35 per ton. So as an example here, if it costs $85 a ton to process the recyclables and you can sell that ton for $55, the city is required to pay runt fee $30 per ton. So we're estimating and budgeting in 2021, we'll have $162,000 dedicated to that recycling agreement. I wanted to bring this to your attention because it's a 19% increase, a $548,000 increase between 2020 and 2021. With that, we're available for any questions.
Matt, do you put this up to bid occasionally and have, say, Waste Management or Public Waste bid on this, this contract?
Would you like me to take that matter, Dana?
Megan, I was going to ask if you would speak to the process.
Sure. So Dublin participates in a consortium bidding process that is organized and advised by SWOCA. And our current contract was a three-year contract. But in years past, we've done everything from three-year contract with options to extend another year or two on an annual basis. There have been five-year contracts. But actually, the timing, right now, we are just starting to coordinate and participate in the consortium bidding process for 2021. So currently, the consortium that we're a part of is just Dublin and Washington Township. The previous bid cycle, we were part of a much larger consortium and we only had one bidder. So the thought was that maybe we got too large and we, you know, eliminated some competition because we were just too large for some of the other bidders. So then we went down to a smaller size consortium. We were able to attract a little more competition, but the prices are going up across the board statewide. It's not just Central Ohio. Recycling is, you know, I've been here since 2014 and we always had free recycling. And now just this year, we're getting into having to pay for recycling, which is unfortunate. So we're having that conversation with all the communities that participate in the consortium process in Central Ohio. So yes, there's, there's a lot of analysis done, a lot of coordination, and we look at it from all different angles to try to figure out how to, you know, did this so that we get more and more competition. It's just a tough business.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, what do you attribute the costs into recycling? Is it just the market? Is there not a market there for the recycled goods that there was? Or are we providing more quality recyclables? Is it an education component to our people that, you know, too much is not eligible for recycling because it's too dirty or whatever? Or is it just market driven? I mean, that has contributed to it in the past, but it, this is solely market driven. Markets just collapsed and costs went up as a result.
Well, and there are markets now that won't even take our recyclables from the U.S. anymore. China will not take our recyclables anymore. That was a massive hit to the recycling industry.
Yep, that was a couple of years ago that they stopped making our materials, period.
Yeah, and I think you're really starting to see the fallout of that now in, when you couple that with the pandemic and people being home and doing the additional recycling that they're doing, it's just compounded on itself. And so the market has just been turned on its head.
Maybe this is an opportunity to think about as you go forward, our own public relations campaign of, of single-use products. I mean, I, I think that we might be able to maybe not save the money, but at least save the planet a little bit if the city of Dublin stopped using single-use water bottles and single-use packaging and, and, you know, as John did years ago with the Wellness Initiative, maybe we need to do something about a single-use initiative, reduce the recyclables that we put into the system. Of course, that's, that's at 30,000 feet and we're talking in operations budget. I'm, I'm off now.
That's the kind of thinking it takes.
Outside the box, right Dana?
Indeed.
Okay, Matt, well, I don't know exactly how much, near the end of the slide deck, how much more you've got.
I've got about five more minutes, Mayor.
Yep, great.
Perfect. All right, so other departments and divisions. Orienting ourselves one final time to this fund summary, this is really the part in green when we think of operating budget. This is the $94 million figure, and this is kind of what we think of and what we're talking about in this last slide. So this, this slide is a graphical representation of our organizational chart, color-coded to budgetary impact. So again, the, the parts that do not have anything outlining them are not, they exist, but they do not have a budgetary component. They either exist in the division immediately above or below them. The Finance Director definitely exists, but he lives budgetarily in fiscal administration. So to read this chart, what you can see is, as Dana and I have been kind of saying since the beginning here, this is a very status quo budget. You can see there, the vast majority of the departments are green, which is a status quo budget, less than 3% change. Many are in fact slightly negative, given the general decline in Personnel Services from 2020 to 2021. There are a few that are increasing. I'll just take a, a little bit of time to talk about them here. Communications is a 3% to 5% increase, and that really is due to the finalization of the expansion that began last year to Adwordington. As you'll recall, we didn't fund all the positions last year. We're now funding them at full strength in order to support that transition's completion. So that is really what's driving that cost increase. Outside of that, there's not much of a story to tell. There are three divisions that are having budgetary increases greater than 5%. We've talked about a couple of them because they were on the noteworthy changes to the budget slide discussed on the 12th. But Economic Development is seeing an increase in economic development incentives of over $600,000. That's obviously driving their relatively small department's budget significantly higher than 5%. But those are a result of a very successful economic development year in 2019. So a lot of those development agreements are now coming online and resulting in those incentive payments. Recreation, we're seeing an increase in recreation, but again, it's not necessarily the Recreation Fund, but it's actually in the Pool Fund. So it's an increase in the Pool Fund due to opening the North Pool. They had expenditures budgeted for one pool last summer, and now budgeting for two pools, one of which is brand new. So we would expect an increase in expenditures associated with that. And then finally, there's an increase in the Clerk of Council's budget, and that is an increase in overtime in contractual services related to the Government and International Relations Manager position, moving from the City Manager's Office to contractual relationship in the Clerk's Office. And overtime is a result of the increased evening public meetings that that office is being asked to consider. So outside of those very high-level budgetary impacts, we really do see a status quo budget. Happy to talk about anything on this slide, but also as part of this kind of wrap-up, discuss additional topics that you're interested in hearing about last week because we've covered some of the larger policy issues that need to be covered from a high level. You can see that there's a lot of green on here, but there might be something that you'd like to talk about specifically. So happy to take requests for information and discussion to be presented next Monday as well. With that, I'm done.
Okay, questions about what we have here? I think Matt's next slide was what do we want to see next? So Matt, what do you have, what do you have already slated for our next time together?
Sure, so next time we get together, we're going to have a discussion about the Visit Dublin, Ohio and Arts Council requests. And those are the only two topics of conversation that I have to be covered. So I'm open to additional topics that we can dive into this week and pursue.
I guess what I would add to that real quick is Matt and I have had some discussions with both Scott Drang and David Dionne. And I think what I'd like to propose that we do is really try to understand what we think their ask will be for next year. Let's sort of plan for that relative to the budget process and then see how that, you know, unfolds through the course of the year. And we'll be able to get, get you more detail on that as we come to next, next Monday night.
Thank you. Topics y'all want to maybe spend a little bit of time on?
I have a, I have a question for Dana. You know, in listening a little bit to the Historic District Task Force, and not to jump in what their recommendations are, but I, I think they were leaning towards some sort of Main Street management. And so I, you know, I don't know if that's something we should be thinking about as a possibility for funding, but I, I know it's going to probably be something that's going to come forward and we don't have any space in here for, for any monies for it. So I think that should be, you know, an area we talk about.
Yeah, I think there may be several things that they're recommending, and I think that recommendation probably is going to make it to you. I think Jenny, you said November, mid-November, the second meeting in the local plan frame?
Yeah, either that or December meeting.
Okay, so, you know, I think, I didn't want to hedge that too much, although there are some things I'm anticipating. I would, you know, I, it's important to do that. Obviously, we want to take into consideration those recommendations and figure out what, what council might want us to undertake or not. You know, we have, do have some contingency funding in here that enables us to adjust to those sort of things. But as far as policy question about the overarching management and so forth, that's a pretty big discussion. And I would venture to say one that probably won't finalize till into, you know, the first couple of months of next year. You can always adjust this budget, you know, based on how those outcomes, you know.
Okay. Other items you all like, would like to see us discuss?
I had a couple thoughts. One, in addition to certainly the work done by Visit Dublin for economic vitality or rejuvenation or whatever word we want to use, I would be very interested to know if there are economic development ideas from the team, non-hospitality related. I would like to just get an overview of thoughts on that, even if they're in the budget or aspirational that aren't in the budget. I, I would like a quick little update on that. I think that would be very useful. The second is, is more tactical, I guess. I would just like to understand on what we would call discretionary spend for travel and things like that. I, I know that's sort of flat. Could you just sort of put that in a chart for us, Matt, and saying, we've looked at these things that are discretionary and here's, here's, and I, I say discretionary, I would say non-resident service related. I picked travel because I know you talked about this, and I didn't know if you had a chart that would summarize that. And then finally, I know in light of all of the things that are happening, government relations and, and the 20-day rule and a variety of things that we have talked about, just at sort of a high level, do we need to have sort of some additional funding in, in that area or some thoughts about from, you know, government relations as we, is that position went from full-time to sort of part-time to, you know, where we are today? Just some thoughts about that. Maybe there's dollars and cents on that, but want to make sure we fund that as we need to. So those are sort of three thoughts as I was looking through the budget today. And Matt, thanks. This is a heck of a lot of work. Much appreciated.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you very much, Maduro. So I just wanted to quickly touch on travel. As, as was noted in the presentation on the 12th, all travel and training lines across the city were reduced by 50% as part of this operating budget. The remaining travel and training is going to be utilized. We have a lot of staff that have a lot of professional certifications and a lot of the training to maintain those certifications has now moved virtual. So at the 50% level, we're going to be able to maintain the ability to provide the opportunity for our employees to keep those certifications current with that funding. So that would be the budget.
Could you just quantify that? How much savings that was, just sort of?
Sure.
I'm just interested in that number as we're looking to move things around, so.
Absolutely.
I, I would only add, and we'll get you that number, I would only add that that, you know, acts as similar to as, similar to a freeze on travel training because we are still getting licenses and certifications. We can't let those slip.
Sure.
We'll continue to do that, but it still acts as a freeze. And then, you know, what I would envision is if things were to get better into next year and we can show the value of what that can mean, we would probably come back with an ask to, to turn that funding back on to some level or a little, you know, if it, if the opportunity presents itself.
You know, on that, that same vein that Kathy was talking about, as we, as we talk next week with Scott and Arts, I don't recall exactly, but I, I thought we had an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development that they're working together and there was some funding that was going to take place. There were some monies that, that the city was giving to the Chamber to, for sharing of information, sharing of data, sharing of business contacts, that sort of thing. But I, I don't think it's in the 2020 operating.
There was a specific ask of $50,000 and my, my response was we're not looking at adding net new programming, which is what I looked at that as. So I'm not advocating net new programming to that extent. I think that's a discussion that we should probably pick up next year.
I think that's a discussion that we should probably take up next year. We'll, we'll continue it. Don't take me wrong. We'll continue the dialogue. But adding that new programming, I'm not adding it really anywhere else. So I'm not looking to add that. I, I give, I totally get the importance of economic development and that's where we should be investing. But I think that's something we should probably take up in the next year. If, if, that's my recommendation in my.
Oh, well, I thought it was something that we had already agreed to. So the only reason I brought it up is that if we were having this discussion next week and we had this cooperative agreement, that it would have been, I think, smart to have the Chamber's input, but.
Yeah, we had not agreed to that at this point.
Okay.
So when we have the, the little bit of the economic update, we can talk about those types of things and, and the base to get leverage and this and that. I, I'm just interested in sort of programmatically, because I know there's stuff going on. I just think it'd be very important to have that chat about it. Then, then maybe incorporate conversations like, you know, and what are other potential ideas? And then to your point, maybe it makes sense to, to not do them this year. Maybe it makes sense to do some, something different, or maybe it makes sense to do some things. But I think that'll be a good discussion and appreciate hearing what Colin and team are.
Yeah, I have certainly, certainly addressed that. I'm sure that will be much in line with the execution of the economic development strategy that you've adopted and how are those things progressing. So I will certainly report out on that.
Okay, anything else? I, I have one ask I'd like to see, just in the event that budgets get very tight. I, I'd like a summary of all of our contractual agreements and their value of those. And maybe we can just be aware of those things. And as budgets get tighter or looser, you know, rather than impacting some of our own folks, what kind of things can we, around what could we do or not do, things like that. But I, I think, you know, as, as things could get more difficult, understanding the contractual or agreements that we have and the price tags associated with those and, and what the services that we get might be placed to start looking.
Yeah, we did that exercise last year, so we can pretty easily update that. I would imagine 95% of that's going to be the same as we did last year. And because those are static contractual services that are very much related to, you know, maintenance and things like that, probably not much in terms of net, net new there that I'm aware of, that we'll, we'll highlight that. One, one item that's particularly large is I put $250,000 in this budget related to the 2035 framework. And that sounds like a big number, but the reason I did that is, is our experiences. And, you know, community planning can be a little bit expensive. Part of that is, we don't know what you might want to pursue with that as the conversation unfolds. So I really put it in as a placeholder. And Vice Mayor DeRosa had asked that question earlier and my response to that was, was very similar to this. But by way of what that consists of are things like, if you wanted to have a guest speaker series or something like that, that whether that's online or not, that's going to have costs. We could use, what we find is we, sometimes you might want to hire specific skillsets that maybe are expertise that we don't have on staff. You know, there's costs associated sometimes with mapping and rendering and things like that that people want to be able to have vision of. There is one particular thing that I think we would need to go outside to update. And I think it was Bich, I'm not going to say this right, Beshler, Teich or somebody like that. I totally, I totally screwed that up. They did a fiscal analysis relative to the type of growth. So you plan your type of, of growth and then they do a fiscal impact analysis of that, which really should work hand-in-hand with this sort of planning. And actually needs to be updated. That's a component that I think we identified that really need to be updated in the existing base community plan. And then the other thing might be, I think we discussed maybe the need for a survey if, if there was something that you might want to survey the community about. Certainly, you know, the new tools that you can, methods that you can leverage for surveyings relatively inexpensive, but that's not where the cost is. The cost is having the right expertise to help you design the questions. So, you know, that's not really a, an expertise that, that we have. That's, that's, I don't think is extensive as you would want to undertake if you so, that you so chose to do that. So, so that's, that, that's probably the biggest, probably one of the biggest contractual service items, I think, that we were proposing in the budget. Tischler, Bice, that's the name of it. Thank you. I was reading Jenny's mind here as she came in.
Yeah, well, you know, all of those would certainly be very helpful. Okay, anyone else have anything further that they'd like to see next time we're together? Not seeing anyone reach for their unmute button. Okay, General, do we have anything else for the good of the order this evening?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Very good. Well, with that, you all have a wonderful night. We will stand adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Good night.